Is she here today, tonight? Yeah. Is she all right? Okay.
Hey, George. Good, thank you.
I haven't told them this before.
Oh, gosh, well, thank you.
Here I call a February meeting of the Atmex County Board of Supervisors to order. Please write to the invocation by Mr. Carter, followed by pledge allegiance.
Ladies and pray. Have most grace to heaven and father, hallowed be thy name. Dear Lord, we thank you for all your blessings that you have given to each of us. We ask you now to be with us throughout this meeting, things we say and do will be for the betterment of this community. And dear Lord, we going through experiencing a whole lot, as you know, sickness. And be with the ones that are, that are sick. Bless them. Dear Lord, and we ask that you be with our public service personnel on whatever endeavor they are having to do. We know that the volunteer firemen has really, really been up to, up to their necks, and thank you for blessing them. And as we get forth to, to undergo another storm, we ask your continued guidance and your blessings. All this in Christ's name. Amen.
Okay, first of all, we have the setting of the agenda. The agenda is listed in your book cover at this time. I'd like to submit, in addition to the agenda, that being a declaration of local emergency for this current period. So could I have a motion to adopt the declaration of local emergency to the agenda?
So moved.
Is there a second? All in favor, say an aye.
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 All right, this will be agenda item three A. Is there... Now, take a motion to approve the agenda as amended. So moved. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, move by Mr. Carter, second by Reverend Jones to approve the agenda as amended. All in favor, second to say an aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none, the agenda has been approved as amended. All right, first off, citizen public comment period. This is time provided by board allows citizens the opportunity to address the board on any issues of importance to the citizen. No individual citizen shall be permitted to address the board for more than three minutes. I want to remind citizens that this is your period, and your only period, to talk. We don't allow interruptions once the business meeting has, or once we're into the action items. All right, citizen comment period, we have first up Ms. Helen Adams.
Helen Adams, 1130 Row here in Apple Maddox. And I hadn't spoken to Patricia about this, but I just wanted to comment on the Oakville voting precinct that you're planning to move, or maybe move AG, AG there. The parking situation will have to be expanded. This past election, I do not vote in that precinct, but I have family that does. And one party had to park on the side of the road. He said a lot of others were parking on the side of the road. It was after dark, he had to turn his headlights on, he said he left them on so his vehicle would not get hit. But I understand that AG, which I've, I've been to all the precincts in the years past. AG has a small parking area too. So, but anyway. And I did want to have two other things I wanted to mention was the gravel that was supposed to be put down at the convenience centers. And I will say, the Oakville voting precinct has a good coating of gravel right now. So that's been put down, but that's the voting precinct. But anyway, these convenience center, which is where I go to in the past for all this weather, it would rain, whatever, I'd get back in the car with dirty shoes, dirty tires on my vehicle when I got home, and have to wash my shoes. Well, today, there's no gravel up around the area where I get out of my car. You can see where there's some put down, but none where you would actually physically have to step out and get your trash and drop it into the bin. And the last thing, which is totally off the thing, and I know nothing about the county, how it works, seriously, but how does the county decide when they sell their land? Does someone just step and want to buy it? And it's voted on and approved or whatever, and no one else that may be interested, that wasn't realized that it would be sold, might be interested. But if it's a big company, a normal, average citizen probably could not compete with that. So, I don't know how that works, so maybe you all can let me know.
All right, any other citizens want to comment who maybe didn't sign up?
I didn't.
I do.
Please state your name and address.
My name is George Wheeler, and I live at 394 Gun Branch Road here in Apple Maddox. And my voting precinct is the chap voting precinct. And I understand that you all want to move our voting precinct also to Spout Spring Ruin Town. So we want to know why. There's, and we've been voting at the little booth that took that away and put us in the back of the church at Central Baptist Church, and that seems to be working out fine. I haven't had any complaints from any of the church members up on that end. We have a lot of older generation now that's coming up, like me, that do not want to have to drive from this side of town all the way to the other side of town on 460 to be able to vote. So, we want to know how you make these decisions about where do we need to go to vote at.
Very good question, Ms. Wheeler, and last month, the Registrar's Board made a full presentation, given the reasons why. It's also written up in the Times-Virginian newspaper. And during the public hearing that we're going to have here in a few minutes, it'll be discussed some more.
Good. Well, you know we don't have Time Virginia in the month. That's gone now.
Pardon?
The Time Virginia is gone.
Yes.
So if you all would stop, you know, because a lot of people don't get Time Virginia. A lot of people get the Lynchburg newspaper. So, if Apple Maddox does not have a Time Virginia anymore, then that means you need to be putting it in Lynchburg, Farnble, because a lot of people that live on the pamphlet end might get the Farnble Herald. So, people can understand what's going on in the county and know when to come to these meetings, because if you don't look at it online, you don't know when you're going to have a meeting. Because, because it was holiday yesterday, you didn't have a meeting. So a lot of people didn't know that you were going to have a meeting tonight.
Well, our meeting schedule is published a year, or at the beginning of the year.
Well, that, that, I know what you're saying, the beginning of the year, because a lot of people don't worry about the beginning of the year, they worry, go from month to month. You know, just like their paycheck, they go from month to month. So, as a board, you all need to be more aware that some of these people don't know what's going on in this county. And you need to be more aware of that, and you need to take more precedent in letting people know what's going on in that county.
Thank you, Ms. Wheeler. All right, and next up is appearances. These are scheduled times provided by the board to allow citizens and organizations outside the county government to discuss matters of importance within the board. Number one, resolution to honor one of our citizens, Ms. Anne H. Dixon. Attached to the board's review is adoption as a resolution in honor of Anne H. Dixon, retired after 34 years of service at Atmex County. Mrs. Dixon is presented, is present to accept the resolution in her honor. Staff recommendation is to adopt the resolution in honor of Anne H. Dixon on her retirement after 34 years of service to Atmex County. So I have a motion to the same.
So moved.
All right, Reverend Jones moved, Mr. Carter second. Any discussion? Mr. Carter, what do you say?
Aye.
Mr. Heps? Mr. Wescott? Reverend Jones?
Aye.
And I vote aye also. So the resolution is passed, so I guess, Ms. Dixon, if you'd like to come on. Board, all come down here. All right, resolution in honor of Anne H. Dixon on occasion of her retirement after 34 years of service at Atmex County. Whereas Anne H. Dixon retired from the position as director of parks, recreation, and tourism effective December 31st, 2024. After having served the citizens of Atmex County with their gaming personality, strong work ethic for 34 years. And whereas Anne H. Dixon used the daily work activities of the lady of love, performing a commitment to their native Apple Maddox. And whereas Anne H. Dixon was responsible for the use and upkeep of the Atmex Community Center, working hard for years to keep the building and grounds in excellent repair. And whereas Anne Dixon was the county's lead on development, expansion, and maintenance of Atmex County Community Park on East Tower Road, written writing grants, leading fundraising efforts and working with volunteers, engineers, contractors, and others to create a park that today is a source of pride for county citizens and a rep. And whereas Anne H. Dixon managed metals of the Atmex Community Center and the Oakville Works Institute, as well as worked with Atmex Youth Sports, Atmex Soccer Association, Atmex County Public Schools, and other scheduled use of athletic facilities such as Atmex Community Park, County Hall Park, and former fields. And whereas Anne H. Dixon was responsible for hiring instructors to teach kids, excuse me, to teach karate, dance, CPR, and other recreational athletic programs throughout the years. And whereas Anne H. Dixon effectively participated in a group of community leaders asked to plan local events, logistics, and outreach for the Civil War sets of 2020, 2015. And whereas Anne H. Dixon served at Atmex in participation in regional endeavors, including regional crossroads and beginning crossroads, the policy of interaction between the tourism corporation, the Virginia Department of Conservation for Recreation, National Parks Services, and other government agencies. And whereas Anne H. Dixon collaborated with ATX Tourist Union, the Portland Festival Park Foundation Board, and other groups in implementing this plan and implement the Atmex Christmas Parade and other holidays and activities each year in the process of working together to turn downtown Atmex, sports square, and Portland Festival Park into a Christmas wonderland with lights, garlands, and ornaments. Now, therefore, a very resolved, the Atmex County Board of Supervisors hereby officially recognize Anne H. Dixon for 34 years outstanding service with the citizens of Atmex County.
There is one other participant in the conference. Please announce yourself.
A further resolved, the board supervised to do that switch Anne H. Dixon along with the captain of the town, filled with travel, gardening, and other must-visit joys of a retirement dream. And adopt that board supervised to Atmex County on 18th day of February, 2025. All right, next up. Well deserved to get him. All right, next up, we have Sheriff Robert Richardson and Mr. John Benoy, Public Safety Director, have requested a period before the board to discuss the radio project.
Chairman, board, thank you all for having us tonight. Mr. Hinkle, I'm going to talk to Mr. Hinkle, so I wanted to apologize. We got everything together this week, but I don't think there's no time to get to Public Safety meetings yet, so it's kind of pretty long. Many busy people, which is a bit of a busy season, without talking to the rest before our prior departments, because that's not a good time for it. To come up with the needs, we can't even finish the radio project. Uh, to conclude, we've been going through a lot of things, a lot of things. We all know where we started. What we're here for today, one of the strikes my head out there, is how we can get here and not have to do much. Thank you, we thank you all for that. I don't know how that can make, uh, down, this animal, it's coming to stuff out of the way. What we see at front end is the need for the sheriff's office, both to amplify and also to act like private partners. To finish out what they need, use of the physical equipment to use for the regular system. Uh, rescue is part of the power that we need, and we need to purchase for them to be able to do that. What we see at the bottom is the requirements and needs for the new power. The biggest thing on there is the test place. If, uh, we didn't show the design goals, how it's got to be tested, make it work and capable, we seem like it's unfit. What we need to cover there. Uh, if everything is put out in price, these are estimated high prices. So we're going to make sure we're coming in those. The aggregate total of the load, uh, two thousand thirteen thousand, six thousand twenty seven. The aggregate total of everything. Where I come in to ask for the votes, I mean, it's already allocated money to the program. Not only one budget, I put a radio system that is more than this many. So the money that we pay for this is already allocated to John's budget and he pays it. And the money, money, to just approve up the voting report is not a big problem. So, to put this into challenge, the only thing we left to finish the project would be actually get on the safety tower. So the only other science is that we can come back over some film, it would be labeled with the cost. To move the, um, building, sitting down back here on the floor, so we can put it in quick. Move that down the system. Maybe put somebody on the foot of the tower itself, and run around there, and then sell it. After that, we should just bring the two towers. So everybody would be able to do that.
Any questions? Any questions for the board? So is it no new money, so you're just asking for permission?
Now, Mr. Chairman, I, I don't have any. You all have searched, researched, uh, met, and met to come up with this, uh, I know it's been well, well looked into.
Just so everybody will wear it well, at some point in the future, it'll be year of all, everybody who's worked in the county, uh, and that's what our recipe, we know that, so we will be able to just, like, focus with kind of doing it. So, all this equipment we're getting from us of the power of the other guys, to be able to, to house there, to be able to cause it, and everything else, just to be able to all our, all our, you know, staff, kind of, and then we have to stop our losses as well.
No more questions? Take a, accept a motion to approve or disapprove? All right, Mr. Wescott's made a motion to approve this, uh, these purchases not to exceed 213, 627, is that what I heard? Is it a second? All right. Second about Mr. Heps. Is there any further discussion? Mr. Wescott, how do you vote? Mr. Reverend Jones?
Aye.
Mr. Carter?
Aye.
I vote aye also. Any purchase? Understand that about the vegetation. Thanks for your presentation. All right. Next up is public hearing on consolation of voting precincts and polling places pursuant to Virginia Code Sections 15 dot 2 dash 1427 and 24 dot 2 dash 3 06. A public hearing will be held to receive public comment and input regarding the proposed ordinance to amend Atmex County Code, Chapter 3, Article 2, Elections. Atmex County Electoral Board has recommended the following changes to precinct boundaries and polling locations. Specifically amend Section 3 dot 2 dash 12C to consolidate the voting precinct and polling places in the Falling River District and the One Precinct with a polling location at the Spout Spring Ruin Town Building, 172 Berth and Lane, Spout Spring, Virginia, and eliminating the chap precinct and polling place. Amend Section 3 dot 2 dash 12B to consolidate the voting precinct and polling place in the Piney Mountain District and the One Precinct with a polling location at the Oakville Ruin Town Building, 181 Piney Mountain Road, Atmex, Virginia, eliminating the AG precinct and polling location. Staff recommends we seek public comment and review the attached ordinance amendment. There will be no vote on this tonight. The public, uh, comment period has to exceed to 45 days, so there will be no action taken until the March meeting. And public comment will be taken up until that time. So at this time, it appears that Ms. Helen Adams would like to speak on the polling precinct, or did you include that in your?
Well, I did, but... Um, I would speak on that, but I found it, uh, hard to do it in my field. But, just to go through the experience with tax money, it's going to be, it's going to be a lot harder. But just to go through the tax money, it's only me who's talking about that. And that's when we all, not in the city, they get a piece. And I think it's a decent point to come in and do that. In the past, when I would visit each precinct election day, the property, that was the school property, that I understand has been sold or in the process of papers being signed. Um, the people would park in the lower area of that property, the grassy area. They could get off there a little bit. But yet, when it's rainy and whatever, it's just a grassy area. So, um, anyway, my nephew that was parked on South Road, he said even when he got out to vote, there was a line waiting to vote. And which it was a big November, as y'all know, was the big election. And we have another big one coming up in November, which will be probably almost if not as busy or whatever. So, really, I'm just concerned about, that's where I grew up. I guess that's why I'm so concerned about it, and I have family still living on Piney Mountain Road. So I'm just concerned about them, and then also the people that are having to travel way down in the country, the county, to come up that far to vote. And everyone that lives down in that area don't always come toward Appomattox to go to work or whatever. There's Amherst, Charlottesville, they can go in that direction. So, um, that's a regard that I, I'm just concerned with the safety issue in the park.
Thank you. I'll make a comment for Daryl and Beverly Carroll. They contacted them by phone, they're not able to get out at night. And they live at twenty-four seventy-nine Chestnut Grove Road, and their concern was number one, why can't we go back and vote on Election Day and not have three hundred and sixty-five days to vote? They prefer voting in person, they think that's the way it ought to be, but they are concerned about losing the sense of community by not being able to vote at chap, and the hardship it would be on them and some of their minority neighbors to drive all the way to Spout Spring. So that's a comment I received from the Carols on Chestnut Grove Road. Ms. Morton, would you or one of your electoral board members want to come and address the concerns that young lady mentioned about parking and all of that, those facilities?
I can certainly try to talk a little bit about Oakville. We know that the parking is, at Oakville, is difficult, and that people have been parking on the road when it gets busy. I had not looked that closely at it yet. I knew you were putting down gravel, we brought it up last month, and I appreciate that improvement. But it sounds like it's worse than I thought. If people are leaving their headlights on when they go in to vote, and that could be, you know, half an hour, and their car could die, who knows? So we can't have that. So we may want to consider whether we've got to put some lighting out there in addition to expanding the parking area a bit. So I would suggest that that be worth looking at before you make a final decision on the ordinance. And I don't know if, Jeff? Jeff, do you have anything to say about Oakville?
And I just want to be clear.
Okay. Any other questions for the board or comments?
Mr. Heps? Just a reminder on what, what the cost savings is to the county. I know there'll be some future cost savings with not needing to purchase additional equipment.
Right.
It's going to be outdated, but what is the cost savings?
The current cost savings is a little over five thousand a year if you merge both precincts.
And the future cost of equipment?
The future cost of equipment, twenty-seven thousand for the next purchase, and that'll be good for approximately ten years.
So it's a savings of thirty-two thousand dollars?
Well, it's more than that. The five thousand is every year.
Oh, right, okay.
Yeah, I, to address Ms. Walker's point, the main...
It's not Walker, it's Wheeler.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Wheeler, I'm sorry. Thank you. The main reason that we looked at doing this was cost savings, because these are our two smallest precincts. That we looked at the distance, we looked at, at all of the precincts, but these were the two obvious ones, if you will. And we realize it is, you know, difficult for voters to go, the longest change that anyone would have to go for chap is twelve miles added, and we realize that is quite a distance. But there's also, the laws have changed, and anybody can be on the permanent absentee list, and I will mail them a ballot happily. And anybody can come vote in our office for forty-five days for everything except the special election like we just had last month. So those options make the dynamics of the whole thing of voting get a little bit different. But I do understand the concern to the sense of community, and I do understand the concern that there are a lot of people that wish we would go back to only voting one day for each election. Unfortunately, I don't see those laws changing anytime soon. Does that help at all?
No, it doesn't. I'm sorry, but it doesn't.
That's okay.
Because we've been there for the longest time in chap, we stood outdoors in the cold, I've worked the precincts, so I know exactly what it is to work there.
All right, we're gonna, you know, have to end this discussion.
Any other questions, sir?
Any other questions? All righty. Ms. Wheeler, you can, you know, go in and talk to the registrar or any of the registrar or board, those board members down there in office, and have talks with them.
I, I don't think we're gonna talk to them. I think we're gonna talk to Mr. Woskell, since he's our district person for the chap Falling River area. I think he'll, he'll probably get a lot of calls from people.
Well, Ms. Wheeler, I'd like to, I want to correct you, I'm the Falling River District person.
Oh, well, we could call you then.
Twelve miles away from Spout Springs, so it's the longest drive to me to go vote. All right, next up, and again, this won't be voted on until March, and we'll accept public comment until, till then. All right, next up is Item Three A, which is Declaration of Local Emergency. Says whereas the Director of Emergency Management at McAllen County found on Tuesday, February eleventh, twenty twenty-five, that number one, that due to a winter ice storm, McAllen County was faced with dangerous conditions; two, that due to the winter ice storm and conditions anticipated extreme peril to life and property necessitates the proclamation of the existence of a local emergency; three, the Director of Emergency Management has declared a local emergency at seven AM Tuesday, February twen- eleventh, twenty twenty-five. Now therefore be it resolved that McAllen County Board of Supervisors consents; two, and ratifies declaration of local emergency by the Director of Emergency Management, and the emergency did exist throughout McAllen County. It is further resolved that during the existence of said emergency, the powers, functions, and duties of emergency management organization of McAllen County were those prescribed by state law in ordinance resolutions and approved plans of McAllen County in order to mitigate the efforts of said emergency, adopted this eighteenth day of February, twenty twenty-five, if the board so approves. Any count questions?
I'd like a motion to approve this, Jeff.
Mr. Carter's made a motion to approve the Declaration of Emergency, is he second? Mr. Heps is seconded, discussion? Hearing no discussion, Mr. Woskell? Reverend Jones? Mr. Carter? Mr. Heps? I vote aye also. The Declaration of Local Emergency for February eleventh is approved. All right, next up is the Schedule of Public Hearing Amendment to the Noise Ordinance. Last summer, the Board of Supervisors asked the Planning Commission to look at possible changes to the noise ordinance. After much discussion, one minor amended has been put forth. This amendment concerns the terminology used in Section thirteen dash three dash five, maximum permissible sound levels. The proposed changes is to eliminate the word discernible and add some punctuation to clarify the meaning and intent of this section. Staff recommendation is if board agrees with this proposed amendment, then a public hearing will be required prior to adopting the change. Please schedule a public hearing for the next regular meeting of the Board Supervisors, March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM. Staff supervisor concerned, comments?
No, uh, this would just be, you know, in looking at the amendment, just a suggested change, just because some of that language is not clear or perhaps defensible. This is not a solution, however, to the ongoing issue that I have brought up before, and we hope to address that in some other way, possibly through a nuisance ordinance or something like that. But I will move that we set the public hearing for March seventeenth at six PM on this issue.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, Mr. Heps has moved, and Mr. Carter's seconded, to have a public hearing on March seventeenth on the change to the, or amendment to the hearing noise ordinance. Any further discussion? Hearing none, Mr. Woskell?
Hi.
Mr. Reverend Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Heps?
Mr. Carter?
Hi.
And I vote aye also. Public hearing will be scheduled on March seventeenth, twenty twenty-five, at six PM for amendment on the noise ordinance. All right, next up is the Schedule of Budget Work Session. We had to cancel last Tuesday's Budget Work Session due to weather. We need to reschedule. What during the week of, next week of February twenty-fourth would work for new board members following the recommendations?
Just have both dates submitted.
All right, both days being the twenty-fourth?
All of the two, yeah.
Twenty-fourth or the twenty-fifth? Okay. Reverend Jones has no conflicts, Mr. Woskell? All right, then, you want to do the twenty-fourth Monday or the twenty-fifth Tuesday? Tuesday's better for me. Tuesday, the twenty-fifth, six PM? All right, is there a motion to have the Budget Work Session on Tuesday, twenty-fifth of February at six PM?
Second.
Mr. Heps has moved, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter's second. Mr. Woskell? Reverend Jones? Mr. Carter? And I vote aye also. The next scheduled Budget Work Session will be Tuesday, February twenty-fifth, at six PM in this auditorium. All right, next up, Commissioner refund, Commissioner Revenue Refund Request. Ms. Sarah Henderson, Commissioner Revenue has requested the following be paid from twelve oh nine dash fifty-eight oh three refunds. Refund NFCU, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-three cents real estate taxes paid from the escrow for Melissa A. Hemingway. She qualifies for veteran's exemption. Staff recommends consideration above refund. Transfer by consent, eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-three cents from the general fund and appropriate to twelve oh nine dash fifty-eight oh three. No new local funds are required. Is there a motion to approve the transfer? Mr. Woskell has moved to approve the refund, is there a second? Mr. Heps is seconded. Motion to pay and seconded to approve a refund of eight hundred and eighty-four dollars and fifty-three cents for Melissa A. Hemingway? Mr. Woskell?
Hi.
Reverend Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Carter?
Hi.
Mr. Heps? I vote aye also. Commissioner Revenue is allowing to make the refund. All right, next up is Consent Agenda. Includes approval of all bills, minutes, supplementary appropriations, line item transfers, and fund transfers. Any item consent agenda shall be removed from consent agenda request of any board member prior to the vote on a consent agenda. Item to remove from consent agenda shall be considered by the board individually in the order in which they were removed from consent agenda immediately following consideration of a consent agenda. Is there any items on a consent agenda that need to be removed or would like a sheer motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted? Still moved? Reverend Jones has moved to approve the consent agenda as submitted, is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Carter's second. Mr. Woskell, do you approve the consent agenda?
Hi.
Reverend Jones?
Hi.
Mr. Heps?
Hi.
I vote aye also. Consent agenda is approved as submitted. All right, next up is the Attorney's Report. Do you have an Attorney's Report? All right, that's good. All right. Do we have administration report? Was Ms. Adams gonna phone in, or she's with us? She's on? Ms. Adams, do you have a report?
I have a, I have no report at this time.
No report, all right. Okay. Looks like the only information report is the school financial report, which is in your packet for your reading enjoyment. All right, this time is Supervisors Concerns. This time it's for individual board members to share information with other members of the board and the public. Items presented under this heading require action, will be further meeting agenda, or request additional information from staff members. No item presented under this heading shall be acted upon on this meeting without unanimous consent of the board. Mr. Woskell, any concern? Reverend Jones?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Carter?
Yes, sir, I've got two.
Great.
Yes. I noticed animal control shelter that I haven't had, it's undone. Sorry, I don't, something's wrong. What else have you had?
It's under quarantine now.
Well, quarantine, that's, yeah. What's, what's the problem?
I don't know, I just saw the announcement on Facebook.
Yeah. You heard? Ms. Adams, you know?
Ms. Carter, I couldn't hear your question.
The quar- what is the reason for the quarantine at the animal shelter?
Um, can I talk after the meeting?
Oh, yeah, I'd be fine.
I'll be fine.
Okay, thank you.
What's number two?
Yeah, number two. I'll show my stupidity here. Exactly what is cyber space, uh, getting into, got into.
Cyber security.
Yeah, cyber security. Ace, what in the world is?
That question's a little too big to answer. Well, it's, uh, let's see, as the press, press release says, is that what you're talking about, our press release? Thanks, DeWitt.
I may could address that, Mr. Cameron.
What'd you say, Ms. Adams?
I may could address that. I believe I heard Ms. Carter ask a question, what is the security?
Yes.
And, and basically, in the world and in the environment in which we currently live, everything is built on a database, and it's on the worldwide web. And as a result, um, we have to have, we have to secure those files, and trying to secure those files, sometimes we have a breach of information.
So now there's a true Facebook got hacked, that's an example of cybersecurity in this.
So, the county wouldn't, excuse me, the county wouldn't fall under the definition of the school as far as getting hacked. Is that right? Right, same system, same system, okay. So, school's off, but the county's not, then why is that? Is it the same type of defamation?
I think I can address that.
Oh, right.
But the school works on a network where the students are using the internet, and so at this point, they have to secure the system before those students can be back online. A lot of instruction there is on the way.
So that's not, it wouldn't be applicable into this case, Janet and Wanda?
Well, as I understand it, it would accept some of their operation, but it doesn't require a total shutdown until the government. We're still able to do day-to-day activities and service the public without necessarily having to get into some of the systems that are affected.
Yeah, that's just easy to be.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Heps?
Ace, is it, can you tell where it came from? Country or anything?
Can't make any comment on that.
Oh, okay. Yeah. Well, there's some security concerns that would be active, and that makes sense that you can. Even if, even if you knew, right?
Yeah, that's right.
Um, okay, so it's my turn anyhow?
Yes, it's your turn.
If you're done?
I am.
Okay. Last month, I had stated some concerns about the number of outages on Dominion. I apologize for making that issue contagious to the entire county. But certainly, Dominion has had additional outages that were not tied to this storm, that were random. Random as far as I'm concerned, you know, they weren't related to a storm or things like that, so that question still exists to me on why there are so many outages. And, you know, it's understandable that we had a major storm, and it affected all providers in the county, but I, I still am curious how much preventative maintenance ties into when you have a large-scale issue like that. Because thankfully, what, last, was it last night that there was the wind, or the night before?
The night before.
Okay, well, you know, thankfully, you know, some people unfortunately did lose power again in the windstorm, but I think most people, most people didn't, that's probably because there wasn't a tree left to fall in line. But in general, I do, I do wonder how much preventative maintenance is being done around the power lines? Because certainly, if there was more done, I would think we would have less issues on that.
The right-of-way typically is thirty feet long. Trees on both sides of the right-of-way are typically forty, fifty, sixty, eighty feet long. For the tree to come down, it's going to be quite long. The only way to be totally maintenance free and safe is for the right-of-ways trees to
Yeah, and I, I can get some of that, but you know, well, as I drive down the road, a lot of the trees that are laying down are in the right-of-way. So, you know, I, I can see both sides. I'm not trying to point the finger when we do have a weather issue that obviously caused a lot of the trees to come down. I'm just curious proportionally, how many outages would we have had if, if there was, you know, due diligence on preventative maintenance or tree work? I've heard some constituents say that they haven't seen particular companies do tree work in a long, long time, and I, I would just like to know the information on that. You know, when we get our, we always have the reps come through for Southside and Dominion and AEP and CBC. I'd love to ask those questions when they come by, but... Like, like, like Ross Fain stuff. Yeah. All right, the other thing then, to go along with that, is just a huge thank you. I would love to see how many people from, you know, volunteers, the paid employees, Sheriff's Department, I would love to see how many people in John, your office, and I were involved in that, and how many hours were spent. Lot of, lot of men and women out there working hard all night long, and, you know, we, we greatly, greatly appreciate that, and we're absolutely indebted. And, and the linemen too, out there doing the work all night long for days, you know, greatly, greatly appreciate that.
Your concerns, Mr. Woskell?
I said I didn't have any, but it was Carter reminding me of that. It's your fault. During this outage, during, during this outage, just for humor, I got home the day of the outage, having heart surgery, so, and I had no electric for a full week. I had no generator. But it was brought to my attention that our animal shelter has no generator. So there was no heat in there. There was no way to take care of the animals. Amy was having to fetch and carry water. I do believe that's something I would like to put on the table that the board looks at to remedy that situation, because as a farmer, as a livestock person, it's not acceptable to have the animals at the mercy of that sort of stress, or the employees. So I'd just like to put on the table, if we can, Mr. Chairman, to have the board look at getting a generator. Okay, well, can I ask you to have a facilities community look at?
Yes, please.
Thank you.
Reverend Jones?
No, Mr. Woskell.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
This is a thank you that goes out to Mr. Roy and his staff in regards to steps free, uh, to deed itself, putting there, getting the gravel put out, putting down, and cleaning that area up, whereas people that go in there for the service won't get the cars all messed up, the tires messed up and all, I mean, that's a, you wash it and take it in that? Uh-uh. So, thank you.
All right, uh, I guess I got one shout-out. The county received a message from Jonathan Garrett, the fire chief, congratulating Mr. Vanoy and his staff and their ability to keep the firemen and the other emergency personnel up to date and out there on the roads and cleaning trees and other debris and keeping the, the roads safe and that during that period, so I recognize John Vanoy and his staff and the kudos you got from the fire department and the assistance you gave them both for Appomattox Fire and for Pamplin. So appreciate that, John. And then, uh, the other item I have is going to the power companies. I agree with Mr. Tips. If you go in my area, which is Southside... I agree with Mr. Tips, if you go in my area, which is Southside, lines are mostly clear, but all I gotta do is drive down 460 from here to Farmville and look at all the lines are just weave, it's like the trees are holding the, the lines up. I mean, there's no distance between the trees and the lines. You see poles laying on the line, and the tree branches holding the lines up, and it just amazes me how that some of them people have power down through there, and why that area isn't, why the power companies are required to keep those lines clear like they do on other roads, but that's, that's just my comment. All righty. Up and coming meetings, Tuesday, March 4th, 2025, 6:00 PM, the Joint School Board Budget Session. Uh, Tuesday, March 11th, 2025 is a budget session. Tuesday, February 25th is a budget session at 6:00 PM, and then the next regular board meeting is Monday, March 17th, 2025, at 6:00 PM. So thank goodness there's not a federal holiday, we can go back to meeting on regular Mondays. Mr. Carter?
Mr. Chairman?
All rise.
All right.
We won't, like, we won't see her. We won't see her.